It's our whole house.
I'm one more.
Yeah.
We're gonna get started. Oh, hi, hello. So I would like to call the Madison Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. Please write for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States. You know. Alright, so our first item is our school community session. If we have any members of the public in person or on Zoom, this is your opportunity to speak. We ask that you identify yourself by name and your address. We do limit comments to three minutes. Uh, the meeting is just nice, it's not an opportunity for discussion. If necessary, you'll be contacted for follow up. Which not in person, do we have anyone online? Thank you. Alright, our next item is the Board of Education Student Representative's report. Elian Brook.
So looking back into last week, it was junior prom. And it was, went super smoothly and everyone who I talked to had so much fun. It was a great experience and part of this was because of the pre-prom assembly that took place earlier that week. And during this assembly, there was a speaker who was paralyzed from the waist down and spoke about decision making and how courses impacted his life. And I think it resonated with like a ton of students there. Everyone was like was super paying attention and it was like super great. Well, it was super great how uh everyone was paying attention. Um, so I think that definitely had a good impact on why there's so many good decisions that were made after prom. And also last week was the art show and band concert on Wednesday. And I had the opportunity to see some of the art pieces and listen to some of the band concert. And it was absolutely incredible. There's like so much talent at hand, both visually and orally. Um, earlier tonight was the National Honor Society induction for Daniel Hand Juniors. There is about forty inductees. And I think National Society is like a great way to bring attention to all the hand students that um work so hard inside of us, inside and outside of school. And really just help make the community a better place. Um, tomorrow night is the orchestra concert at seven thirty in the dining and assembly hall. We're hoping for really great attendance and we've been working super hard, so it should be really great. And tomorrow is the last advisory of the school year, so this kind of marks the end of the year and the final push as we have two more reasons.
Yeah, so tomorrow's senior announcement day. So do you wear clothes for the college or career that you're going into? Or if you're taking the gap, you don't wear a shirt from Gap usually? And Thursday is bus driver appreciation day. I haven't ridden the bus since freshman year, but I remember my bus drivers always really nicely wait for me to go out of my house every single morning. Um, Friday, we have EMS people coming in to teach people how to do chest compressions after some new research has shown how effective chest compressions can be to save someone's life. And the senior pre-prom assembly is next Thursday. We're gonna talk about decision making and how to be smart and have fun, but not too much fun that problem. And spring sports are now in playoffs. I know next week Brooke and I have states for track. And a lot of our sports have been doing really, really well, so we wishing the best of luck in their states.
We'll cross one tonight.
Congratulations, Brooke.
Thank you.
Sounds like an exciting time of year. You guys ready? Good feeling?
Just begun with the work.
Yeah.
Racking up. Yeah, that's right.
Will this be the last time you guys done?
Oh.
Okay. Go do you want? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I should acknowledge a small group in person, but we do have three board members on Zoom. Galen, Diane, and Christine. So if any of you have any comments or questions and we don't, just give us a holler. Okay? Okay. Alright, so the next item is the superintendent's report.
Yeah, it's just a short report. The first two items have action items later. Um, and then the last item is is an update for the board and the public. The first item is related to the budget reduction that the board received at the um Board of Finance level. We're pleased the budget has passed. That allows us to fill open teaching positions, fill open positions in other areas, move forward with plans for the summer, so um and guarantee employment for people. So it's really a good time of the year when that happens. And lots of good news, things coming out of that. As the board's aware, we've talked about this multiple times. There is a reduction of $240,000 we need to make. There's no changes to what we previously presented. I just wanted to go through those for the public and and board members as well. We are taking um eighty-two thousand sixty-two dollars out of the right to read mandate money that we get that's set aside. As the board remember, we put over a hundred thousand dollars in that account um as well as other reading materials. So we've used that for reading material libraries, the remaining money in that account. We have moved out the band uniforms for ninety thousand dollars. I've also shared with the board the plan for this. Very hopeful that we could find funds through the ARPA funds remaining with the town. The town has indicated that would be um a welcome use for that. And through the work of Mr. Gage and the high school, we think that number is going a little bit lower than ninety thousand. So we think if we can get in the seventy-five, eighty thousand dollar range, we can make that make that work for band uniforms and we will be all set for another ten years in that area. So that would be great. The Daniel Hand Bridge furniture, we're putting a pause on that. Um, the board knows we purchased half of that furniture last year. Um, just not able to do that through through this budget, but we would move that item down to um potential end of the year funds if we have that. And then the Jeffrey and Ryerson furniture, as we went through the process and checking on delivery dates, we found out that if we waited till July one, so if we waited till after this budget was approved and we had those funds available to issue the PO, we would not have the furniture in time for the start of the school year. So that money did come out of Bill McMinn's account. Um, he does have a furniture account within his line items utilized. You know, planning and second maintenance money for for that furniture. So appreciate Bill doing that and the principals work and making sure that, you know, we'd be able to to make those orders in time. So that's no longer a need. That does total $240,000. That would remove, make the budget sixty-three million six hundred forty-five thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars for a three point oh three percent. Um, we did meet with the finance committee last night. I know Galen will also speak to that work later on the agenda. The board has received the um plan that is proposed to be submitted to the state for the teacher evaluation. The um, the curriculum committee received the very thorough report on teacher evaluation at its last meeting. I know Mr. Penn will speak to that as well. Um, this plan, we believe, meets all the requirements of the state and has the sign off of the PNC committee, which is a committee of teachers and administrators run by Gail. So I greatly appreciate Gail Bellin Hetch's work in getting it to this point. It's um, it's a lot of work. I typically have seen teacher evaluation plans be redone over a year plus timeframe. And um, you know, Gail did this about three months, but it seemed even shorter. It was a, it was quite a rush to the finish line. So um, it's really great and thank you for um our our teacher union, the MIA, and also our teachers, administrators for participating in the process and coming to agreement on that. So we would ask the board to submit our approval, to submit that to the state. And I know I've shared the timeline previously with the board. You know, we would hope to hear approval sometime in in August, September. But if we don't receive an approval, we have a pretty quick timeframe to turn that around, as you can imagine, because it is for next year. So um, we asked for the board's approval on that later on. And then choice program update. So we had submitted um our request to have Madison included in the New Haven Aces catchment area for um to receive choice students. As the board knows, we do send students to New Haven as part of the choice program. This would allow us to receive students through that process. Um, the board had had that opportunity in the past, but then I think they realized that us being part of the learn area, that was not you know, we were not appropriately approved to do that. Gilford has gone through this process. We were all set to be approved. It was part of a larger um changes at the legislature. And um, there were some pieces in there that would require funding. And so it got stripped out very late in the process, to the point that I think our local legislators were surprised that it was it was stripped out, but it was because it was related to other areas, not that it was a concern, a problem for the legislator. And they informed us that we should apply next year. So um, we would get approval. Um, in terms of the timing for that, there are some, I think, benefits. Um, you know, as we look forward, twenty twenty-five is going to be a very busy summer and a school year for us. And so um, you know, I think that there's a, there was a potential that that might not have been the year that we started accepting students or considering accepting students. So we look at twenty-six, twenty-seven as the first school year that we would potentially accept students into into Madison. So still some work to do um here both locally through policy and then also with our employee group. And then, you know, back with the legislator again, potentially for next year. So I just wanted to share that update and happy to answer any questions on any of those items or speak to them when they come up, the two previous ones when they come up as actions.
Any board member questions or comments in person? Anyone online have any questions for Dr. Cook or for board member comments? No? Okay, same then. We'll move on. Do we have any members of the public online for our second public comment period? Okay. Moving on to agenda item seven, board committees and liaison updates. First, we have curriculum and student development with Stephen.
We have not met since our last meeting and our next meeting is scheduled for June fourth, so no re.
Uh, next is facilities committee. We have also not met since our last board meeting. Finance committee, Galen.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. Um, we did meet yesterday at four o'clock. Uh, Emily, Dr. Cook, Stacy Novitz, I were in attendance. Um, we discussed the aforementioned $240,000 reductions and that's going to go before the board in an action item for vote in a few minutes. Then we discussed priorities for possible, well, let me back up. We discussed um end of year transfers and expenditures with Stacy, who walked us through in detail. Right now, um, there's projected use or deficit of about five hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars. We think that we have um six hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred thirty-seven in available funds for the end of the year with a potential for an end of year balance of a positive two hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred thirty-seven. Um, this will change because things are in motion, there are many moving parts. But then we went through and prioritized possible use for these end of year funds. I think Dr. Cook mentioned um that um uh, the bridge furniture was a possible use at Daniel Hand. And this is up for discussion with the full board. Um, the committee um suggested prioritizing Brown Windows, Windows at Brown um for replacement, that would be about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, if the ARPA matching funds do not cover the band uniforms, that would be our second priority. Our third priority would be um uh design money for the Brown Band Room and CTE. Um, it needs extensive renovations because of tiered platforms. The fourth item on the list would be um uh replacing or adding to the bridge furniture at Daniel Hand. And then there's a bid for sixteen thousand dollars for track and field hurdles. So we went through that. And um, then we discussed making a recommendation to the full board at our next meeting, June fourth, to authorize the finance committee chair, that would be me, to close out the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year directly with Stacy Novitz, the finance director. We didn't take any action, we just um included an report for possible action next meeting. So um, that's the end of my report, so fire away with questions.
So I have a question. Um, so I'm looking at um the projections for the deficits and, you know, there's the athletics, forty-five thousand, that's for the postseason transportation. This um special education was four hundred and twelve thousand and that was um mostly due to the extended to the end of the twenty-second year for students. Typical tuitions and then there's facilities Brown Architect for fifty thousand. And that's one that I don't understand because um the Brown Architect, first of all, why is the money coming out of the budget here? If the Brown Architect should have been covered under the referendum?
So Galen, if it's okay with you, I'll.
Yeah, please take it over, Dr. Cook.
Yes, um, thank you for the question. So the the Brown architectural work on the three hundred wing was part of the um referendum. So that that covered that area. But there was a significant amount of other work that happened throughout the building, such as other bathrooms, um, other classroom work to get ready for the reorganization. That was not part of that referendum that we've done work since. And so that totaled fifty thousand dollars to to tech time. And as you can see, we still have, still have more for those um three classroom areas, three or four classroom areas that we um are looking for for future funding. So there, this was work not related to the referendum per se, but it's related to the rework.
So I guess I'm wondering, like, if we knew that it was going to be needed to be done, then, like, why wasn't that included in the referendum?
Because I think at the, at the point of referendum, the the project was a much smaller scope. Like, I think we were looking at just the um, the three hundred wing and and not as much work. But as we've always been considering that that was our our priority for whether it was um, you know, planning and cycle maintenance money or other work was bringing Brown up to, you know, a similar status as much as possible as the new building. So I think there's, there's still, you know, so much, there's a lot of space in the building, but it wasn't always being, you know, the best use of it. So that's what we were, we were looking at, you know, truly is, you know, middle school design in some areas so that we had to make that more of an elementary design.
So when um part of this is the the architect payment for the bathrooms, was that to bring it up to like ADA or code or is this to make it suitable for younger grades or both?
Both.
Because wouldn't it have been covered by CIP for money if it was just?
It could, I mean, it could have been something into to CIP, but it wasn't in in CIP.
So then, I guess my other question would be then, how many other projects coming out of Brown that are somewhat related to the referendum because it's getting ready for the new students at the pre-K to five level is going to be expected to be in our annual budget? Because it, you know, if it's something that's like a a maintenance thing, a facilities, maintenance repair that you would expect normally for that building, that's one thing to have it in the budget. But if this is something like, oh, we're changing it for pre-K to five, like, I have a problem with that. Why it was not included in the original specs for the referendum and having it covered with that?
The the vast majority has been included in the the referendum when you think about the the whole three hundred wing or CIP. When you look at CIP, there's, there's several projects for for Brown that will occur this this summer, the parking expansion. Um, there's some other pieces in there, but there's, there's still, you know, some some work to be done. Like, we talked about the cafeteria tables to be another example. That wouldn't be something necessarily included in 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 CIP or in um in a referendum. And in the referendum, that was planned four or five years ago. That was gonna put in place in terms of the scope for uh for Brown for that. So um, there's just some work always going on, just like we'll need to get back and address Poulsen. We did that main hallway in Poulsen, but all the other hallways still need need some work. So I think we still will have plenty of work to do with our our buildings. This is just the examples of 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 that. And we would need architectural design work for for things like that at that Poulsen.
I mean, I don't mean to split hairs, but I mean, you see my point. So it's, it's like, it's one thing if you're talking about, well, you know, you have to obviously do maintenance on these facilities and some things can come from CIP, but I'm just, I'm thinking that it should have been planned for. Like, it, you know, the age for pre-K to five, you know what would be appropriate for those, you know, their heights, et cetera. And if a change needed to be made, I don't understand why it wasn't included. So it's after the fact, I guess it doesn't matter now, but it just is a bit bothersome to me. So going forward, I mean, if you're talking about changing tables and cafeterias, most likely they probably need to be replaced anyway. It's been quite some time, I would imagine, since they were replaced at at Brown. Um, but I just think that we should be very mindful of it, that we're not just throwing things into our annual budget that really, um, you know, would not normally be there, but it's because we're changing to a pre-K to five. I just think it's, we, you have to be very transparent about it. Yeah, that's my point.
I, I agree.
Like I just said, address that one. Everything that we're doing through that work would have needed to be done regardless. And then also, we don't get everything we ask for for through CIP. So a good example is is Brown School. Well, then a thousand dollars was cut out of CIP that would have been addressing Brown School for furniture and and uh movement, moving cost and things like that. So we don't ever typically get all the money that we're, we're asking for. And then sometimes it falls onto our operating budget. The windows are a perfect example of that. Those are, those are major needs. There's windows seals broken. Um, it will also be energy savings, things like that, deification and safety. And so those are things we prioritize looking at end of the year funds. Um, it's, it's not in CIP anywhere, but it's definitely in.
But I feel like that is more of a a typical maintenance that you would expect because we know the age of the Brown building and we know the windows need to be replaced. So to me, that it could be CIP or it could be in our budget, but it's not something that is completely unexpected. It's not like, oh, well, now the kids are smaller now because they're not, you know, sixth grade or whatever, you know what I'm saying? So um, so that was just my point about that part. And then um you already answered my question regarding the um the furniture that was the Jeffrey and Ryerson furniture that was removed for the, from our budget um to be a part of that two hundred and forty thousand. I was a little concerned because I thought that we needed it, but you said that Bill took it out of his um budget. So, so that is fine with me. Um, and then um the band uniforms. So that process for the band uniforms, we're removing it from our budget, the ninety thousand. And we, how, you know, how how much can we depend on actually getting it covered through the ARPA funds? Does that go to Board of Selectmen to have to vote on it first? And then it goes to Board of Finance for them to approve it? Is that what the practice?
Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, it's an indication that we, it's been indicated to us that they would like to do that, but we won't know until a few more weeks until how much money they have left. They have to identify spending by June thirtieth and then have to spend the money by December thirty-first. So that's my understanding of of how that would happen. It was, you know, something I think that was universally agreed to by the, this board and the other boards, that the band uniforms would would be removed, we would try other ways to get that done. I think this is our best shot at that. I think if this does not work, I would talk to the the this board and and see, you know, other ways we might be able to get that done. You know, go back to the maybe potentially Board of Finance, see if we're returning funds this year. You know, look at other ways to get that done because I do think that it's um, it's needed, especially with the lack of time in terms of how long it takes to get them.
And is there any chance of ARPA funds being used for anything else? And that's, you know, that we have, I know we have these um itemized, you know, on our, on the wish list, if we do have extra money at the end of the year to cover, you know, the the ground windows, the band uniforms, if they're not covered, the the band room at and music room at Brown, bridge furniture and athletic field. So would any of those things be eligible either for the ARPA funds? And, you know, is there any hope of that or no?
I think you could make a case for the other items, but they've indicated to me it's, it's looking around seventy-five, eighty thousand. So um certainly would be ready to make other requests if if money's available. Because I, I, I have seen things in other towns or places even here, you know, purchase for athletics or uh or student furniture. So like the bridge furniture as an example could be something else, too.
And then my other concern is um how much money we have in the special education reserve fund? If, you know, if we did have anything extra, would we be spending it all on the the itemized one to five list that we have for possible use or can we still put more in the special education fund?
So there is, there's good news from the legislation that has passed this year. We don't know the exact timeframe of um when it is in effect, but it will allow the board to have accounts like the special ed account um or a general account in that realm that we can utilize without going through the process of going back to the Board of Selectmen, back to the Board of um Finance. So we could put up to two percent of our um our budget into that account. And so um kind of that end of the year funds could go into that that account. And um we would, you know, have, be more open ended even than the the special ed. Um, I think it's kind of what the board's been asking for. So for example, that could be money that could have purchased the band uniforms or something like like that. In terms of the special ed um account, we did not touch the three hundred fifty thousand. The mechanism for the town returning the um two hundred and twenty-six was to put that into the special ed um reserve account and immediately Stacy moved that to offset the negative in that line item. So um, you know, we're, I'm pleased, the board should be pleased that we haven't touched the three fifty to cover that hole. That was um all through the um support of the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance. So we're able to to get the money back that we returned last year.
But I thought the deficit for the special education for this year was more than the amount that we got returned from last year. So how did our three fifty thousand not go down?
It was um four twelve. We only utilized the two twenty-six to offset that and then others were line out of transfers.
Okay. And then um just as another point is that if we're allowed to put more funds into a reserve fund or whatever we think needs it, that we may also consider keeping some for facilities since we always seem to have very high facility needs that are not always being met. And instead of, you know, we, there are always some items that we kind of kick the can down the road because we have to, because, you know, we can only have so much in the budget and so much in CIP. But if we can have some extra money set aside for facilities, I think um it would be super beneficial. And that's like all I have to say for now, thanks.
Thank you, Diane. Are there other questions or comments about the finance committee report at this time? I'll take action on this later. Okay. Uh, next, thank you, Galen. Our next committee report is personnel from Maureen.
We have not met since our last meeting, so we don't have that.
Thank you. Diane, your backup for policy.
Oh, boy. So we actually have not met, but um in your packet, you will find notes from shipment and Goodwin um as well as the policies for review for our second read and our action items tonight. Um, policy ninety-three hundred, ethical standards for board members. Policy ninety-three ten, board member conflict of interest. Policy ninety-four ninety slash eighty-two oh one, student representatives. The nine thousand series, I will remind everyone, requires a two-thirds vote of the board. And also policy forty-four hundred, gifts to employees, which is a new policy. Policy five-one-two-zero-point-three-point-three-point-two, pediculosis. Fifty-ninety-point-three-point-three-point-one, electronic surveillance. That's it, end of report.
Any questions for Diane? Alright. Mary Ann, learning liaison.
Well, I think I gave it um some some people again about the last one from the onside. And on June thirteenth in the morning, we have our practice. And practice happening. So hopefully he'll stay.
Yeah, especially guys being there anyway.
I'm not, I spoke, I think, just before Marion came on, so I'll come up again at some point through the process. This is their annual report. This is their annual report, so. And then we are, we are asked to leave as superintendents.
I know.
Yeah.
This gets done.
Yes.
You can't say anything.
I know. I can only say. I can only stay if he's designing.
Any questions about learn? All right, thank you. All right, we're on to our action items. Um the first one, action item eight. I have a motion to approve a two hundred and forty thousand dollar reduction to the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five Board of Education budget as specified by the superintendent. Do I have a second? Second by Stephen. Any discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next item, action item nine, is a motion to approve the Madison Public Schools' teacher evaluation plan. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Stephen. Second, second by Marion. Any discussion?
Yes.
Of course, thank you.
No, I'd like to underscore how important this evaluation plan is for Madison in particular. You know, the focus of Madison's full approach is investing in its teachers, both in the curriculum development and, you know, how we do business in Madison. And so what is key to that is an evaluation plan that has a cornerstone that is around professional growth. And not all plans are as strong in that area, um as I believe this plan is. You know, and even though there was a short timeframe, if you read the hundred and forty pages of the the plan, there's a theme that runs through it all, which is a belief in investment in our people and providing them with the opportunities to set good goals and get lots of professional development and growth. So, you know, I see it as one of the key legs of the stool of, you know, what it is that we're building. And, you know, I have complete endorsement, you know, coming out of the curriculum committee for this plan.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Our next action item ten, a motion to approve the wellness curriculum units that were in your packet. Do you have a motion? Marion? Second by Maureen. Any discussion? Seeing none? Those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, next, action item eleven. I'd like a motion to approve the following policies, ninety-three hundred ethical standards for board members, ninety-three ten board member conflict of interest, ninety-four ninety slash eighty-two zero one student representatives, forty-four hundred gifts to employees, fifty-one twenty-point-three-point-three-point-two, prediclosis, fifty-ninety-point-three-point-three-point-one electronic surveillance. Do you have a motion? Second? Any discussion?
I just want to mention that the um policy five-one-two-zero-point-three-point-three-point-two, prediclosis is also called head lice. It's like the, the title was changed to include it.
Those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. All right, action item twelve. Um we'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the May seventh, two thousand twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Maureen? Any discussion? Seeing none? On favor? Opposed? Abstained? Any future agenda items for discussion?
I just want to um have a follow-up to my question about the statistics for AP review that was the utilization for this past year, since all of them should have been, I think, completed by now. Perhaps at the next board meeting.
Noted, thank you. Anything else? Hey, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second? Um in favor? I? Opposed? Same. Motion carries. The meeting adjurs at eight oh six.
That's the shortest meeting.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Memorial. Congratulations, Galen.
Oh, thank you very much.
Enjoy.
Enjoy.
Thanks.